Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us through our first few technical difficulties here. We made a quick switch to this room. So I'd like to call this meeting to order at 4:04 PM. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it's located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. So the meeting is called to order for November 10th Committee of the Whole Meeting. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Administration, do we have any amendments to the agenda today?
No changes.
Counsel, any changes to the agenda as presented? Counselor Nelson? That didn't work. All right, so we have the motion that committee adopt the agenda as presented by Counselor Nelson. Please vote now. Okay, with Counselor McDonald Labarge, Dunn, and McLean in favor by hand. That's a lot of hands. Okay, the next item on the agenda is community announcements. Administration, are there any community announcements this evening?
No, no one's registered for tonight.
Okay, so then we will go on to Section 4, which is reports from administration. The first item on the agenda is the short-term rental bylaw number 1162, and we will pass that over to administration for information.
Thank you, Chair. This will be Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Chair, through to counsel. This report that's before you this evening was a result of a council motion back at the October 28th meeting that council referred the short-term rentals by law to a future committee of the whole meeting, which is tonight. In the report, we just outline that there was a cap that the town council had put on the non-principal residence short-term rentals of 130. And as an update, as of today, we have 47 that are registered with their business licenses and four that are in the queue. So we're at like 51 non-principal residents that are waiting or sitting. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the floor to counsel for further discussion. Yeah, Counselor Dunn?
Thank you. I'm just wondering how many fines have been issued for first, second, and third offenses?
Thank you to administration.
Thank you, Chair, through to counsel. I don't have that information on hand. It was quite a bit ago that we did send out a few fines. And with those, some were in compliance and paid the fines. A few were investigated and determined that they were not applicable. And then there was, I believe there's, I want to say, without having, sorry, without having the clerk here for the business licenses, I believe there is one that is still outstanding that we're working with, and they've received second and third fines. But those are, I don't believe if it was, if it was principal or non-principal. I'm thinking it was non-principal. I would have to check into that for you. But yes, other than that, we've been able to manage and monitor any ones that come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Is there a strike policy on fines being implemented? So, you know, first offense, second offense, third offense. At what point does a person lose their license?
Administration?
Through the chair, I can answer this one. So we do have an escalating fine policy for first, second, and third. We can't pull the license because they are getting fined because they don't have a proper license. So really, our backstop is to be issuing stop orders to the courts if that is the case. And if we have to, if we have to go that far, or otherwise, it's considered third and subsequent offense. So they can continue to get third offense fines.
Counselor Mary Labarge?
Thanks. I do have another question for administration. What is the process for policing this? How are we going about it? I know initially there was a discussion that it was going to be complaint-based. Is that still the case?
Administration?
Thank you, Chair, through to counsel. No, because we have the tools now to be able to identify ones that are not in compliance with our AI software, Granicus, and with cross-referencing their information with ours. And if we've heard on the street, if we've gotten any complaints, then we're able to investigate through all those different tools. And then when we determine that, our first step typically is we would like to give them a phone call first, if we have their phone number or email, and we'll reach out to them and let them know that we've identified you as a short-term rental, and these are the regulations. And then if we don't get any response within a certain amount of time, then we will send a formal letter. We will send them registered by mail so that we ensure that they get it. The next step would be then that we would involve the peace officers, and we would issue them a fine. And they would distribute the fine to them. And then it gets into the system where if they don't pay their fine by their certain amount of time that they have, then they will be invoiced for their second fine and so on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was a process for someone to become compliant. Thank you.
All right, counsel. Just remind everyone, we don't have any direction on the floor at this time. Counselor Nelson?
Thanks. I'm not interested in shutting out any discussion if there is more discussion. But I would like to, what do we do when it's committee? I would like to move that committee accepts this report for information. And if I could speak to it, we just passed the bylaw two weeks ago. And there's a little bit of discussion about, you know, changing the caps. I think with what I know now, I would be open to seeing a reduced cap. But I also don't think that there's going to be all of a sudden 80 applications in the next couple of months. And there's been talk of housing committees. We have the federal budget supposed to have stuff about housing. I anticipate that we're going to learn a lot about housing over the next four, five, six months. And then that'll take us into strat planning. And to me, I would have a lot more tools to make some of these decisions in a few months, once we've had some more time and learnt a lot about housing with all the initiatives that are currently coming down the pipe. But also open if people are pretty passionate about putting a cap on it, because I don't necessarily disagree with it. But at this time, I would just happily move to accept it for information. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Dunn?
I would like to move that committee, direct administration, to bring.
So we do have consensus on the floor at the moment for committee to accept this report for information. So we'll have to vote on this consensus prior to any other further motions or consensus being presented. Is that correct? Okay, so is there anyone that would like to discuss about the acceptance of this report for information specifically at this time? If not, we could certainly call it for a vote. All right, no other discussion, then I say we call this consensus for a vote. So this would be accepting the report for information, which just for clarification would mean that it would not be coming back to a regular meeting for further discussion. It would have to be raised again to be brought back for any further changes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Everyone's clear on what's on the table? All right, so we will call for consensus that Counselor Nelson made, that committee accept this report for information. Please vote now. All right, so we have Counselor Labarge and McLean voting in favor by hand. Okay, so that motion is carried six to one with Counselor Dunn against. All right. Any further discussion on this item? If not, we will move ahead to item 4.2, which is to amend the council procedure bylaw number 2003-1. I will send this to administration.
Thank you, Chair, and I will refer this one to Ms. Borbo.
Good evening, counsel. On November 4th, at the regular meeting of council, administration was asked to bring back the council procedure bylaw with recommendations to include minute with counsel. This has been done for you through Section 9 of the attached amended council procedure bylaw number 1003-1. We have set out in the overview on page 11 of 63 of your agenda some of the criteria that we followed in putting this in place. And much of this criteria were recommendations that did come through with the parliamentarian when Mr. Brand did his review in 2024, 2025. So we viewed the minute with counsel as being an opportunity for people to speak on items that are on the agenda. We're still asking for registration by 4:00 PM on the day before the actual meeting. We have recommended there be a maximum of five speakers per meeting. And each speaker will have up to one minute to present their announcement. And council as a whole, rather than just the chair, has the authority to increase the speaker's amount of time. And just before I put this over to counsel for questions, I also wanted to make note that we took this opportunity with the bylaw coming back as it amended to do a housekeeping amendment and include the reference towards our electronic meetings that we now have that bylaw that has since been put into place. So over time, you'll see that addition to all of our bylaws. So that is also in this as a housekeeping item. And with that, I will turn this over to committee for any questions.
All right, counsel. Mary Labarge?
Thanks. I did want to see this come back. And I would like to see it be as open and flexible as it possibly can be. So I don't know, counsel, do we want to work through these, what, six items, one by one, to see if we want to see them be included? I mean, like, from my perspective, if a citizen wants to talk to a topic and they have a minute or two minutes or whatever we decide, I don't even know that it should be limited to what's on the agenda for that week. I think it's an opportunity for citizens to come in and have a conversation with council, to bring up their concerns as it relates to the town. I think it needs to be pertinent to the town and not personal. And then I would like to see the floor be wide open. So I don't know, I asked my council members if we want to walk through these one by one. Do I just throw out suggestions? How do you want to deal with it?
Counselor Charlton?
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree more. Just because I do think having community announcement as part of this kind of opens up the floor for citizens to let us know what's going on in the community. Perhaps it gets more exposure for the community as well as counsel. So I like the direction you're going with that.
All right, thank you. Counselor McDonald?
I also agree with Brian. I believe this needs to revert back to the original way it was presented. Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Yes, I agree. And I don't know how we proceed. But just going through this and reviewing it, you know, I thought having the cutoff date on Monday was too early, right? I thought the five might have maximum or four, and then three minutes to speak, right? I thought one minute, we're all at the forum and you had 90 seconds. And it took me 90 seconds to start thinking about what I want to say. But anyways, I don't know how we got through, how we go through this. But I agree that it has to come back. We just went through an election where we told the citizens we wanted to hear them. We want to listen to them, and we want to work for them. So what better way? And if, the problem I have with delegations and stuff, there's too many rules. If I'm sitting home, I'm not going to sit in front of the computer. I'm not going to put a presentation together. I'm not going to submit it. I'm not going to come. I'm going to come here and I'm going to give counsel speaking on something to deal with the town my three minutes. And I think that's exactly what that should be for.
Thank you. I have myself in the queue next. So I think that I agree with the, having the ability to discuss a variety of topics, community events, things on the agenda, all of that. I am in favor of that. I am very much in favor, though, of needing to have parameters set around it because it can very quickly escalate into something that's incredibly difficult for a chair of a meeting to manage. And when you have multiple people chairing, different deputy mayors, it could be at a committee meeting, it could be at a council meeting, and you're then relying on the strength of the chair to manage certain people, certain personalities, difficult conversations, all of those things. I think it's very irresponsible, quite frankly, to not have a limit where that cuts off. I know that, I don't believe one minute is long enough. I certainly believe that that should be longer. And I do, I don't know how to do it. And I think is kind of the biggest thing is what was always difficult last term in council when we had it was generally the public would show up and they would want to ask us a question, and none of us could answer that question. And that was the really difficult part of trying to determine that level of engagement where they can come and bring you all these things, and everyone's sitting there really wanting to engage to some extent, which is why that delegation's piece, excuse me, was brought forward because a delegation does give you that opportunity to go back and forth. So how do we find the balance between giving that minute with counsel where someone can say at 2:30 on a Tuesday that, hey, you know what? I just found out about this. I want to come and have a minute or two to engage with counsel, but still have something that has parameters in it through the procedural bylaw that's easy to manage by the chair and that can leave people feeling after they come here like they got what they wanted by showing up, not just stating something and then them leaving and none of us answering. I think that's a hard, hard middle ground. So I don't necessarily know the answer, but it's just my thoughts. Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, I think in my previous term, delegations weren't used for citizens. They were used for non, like, it was a lot more formal. So I think if we bring minute with counsel back, which I'm obviously in support of, I think the communication piece is, you know, if you want to speak with counsel, engage with counsel, this is what we need. If you want to just let counsel advise counsel something, let counsel know, then these are your two channels. And I think it's relatively simple. For a couple of other points, I, yeah, I think a bit more than a minute. I think, I think the more, the more friction you add also means that the people that are coming up are in a different state than if it is a little bit less, you know, if you have to register and there's all these steps to go through, then you go, I got to make this minute worth it. Whereas when you can come up and it can be a little bit less intimidating for the people upfront, I think you also get likely a little bit different tone when it's coming to counsel as well. I think when you make it really uncomfortable for the people there, they're more likely just to make it more uncomfortable, not because that's their intention, because it's scary. Anybody that comes up there and talks to us, it's a hard thing to do. So I think, you know, having it be the intimidation factor as light as possible, I think, is the key part of this for me. So, thank you.
Counsel? Mary Labarge?
So then a question through to administration. So we got 91 through 96 in that list of things. Would you like us to address those one by one for you to bring us something back next time? Is that an effective way to do this?
Yeah, through the chair to members of council. Depends on how far you want to go with the amendments. You know, if you think it's easier to just go through all of these items and you can decide to include them, to not include it, or to change it. Or if there's just a, you know, a select few, you know, directions that council wants to provide, we can do it that way. But certainly, if we want to go through this list, we certainly can.
Okay, so I would like to do that, then. Let's walk through these one by one. It sort of builds a little bit of a format around this and focuses discussion rather than us chasing our tail up here for the next 15 minutes. Thanks.
So is that, sorry, CEO Panasik, is that something that you'll go through point by point? Or would you like me to do that?
Through the chair, if you could, if you, you know, as counsel, you can discuss them one by one. And if somebody's making or is comfortable making a motion on that particular item, can certainly make it. The motions, because this is committee of the whole, do not have to be overly formal. These aren't readings of the bylaw. This is just shaping it. So if you just make a motion on what you want to see accomplished, we'll build all those in for a regular council meeting.
Perfect. So with that, if we look at Section 9.1, the very first item, the verbiage says, "The purpose of minute with counsel is to provide a platform for residents to speak to counsel about items on that meeting's agenda." Mary Labarge?
I would like to move that committee sees consensus to strike the words about items on that meeting's agenda from 9.1.
All right, while admin does that, Counselor Nelson?
I'm just curious if, I'm a little bit worried about going down this path because we also probably want to add some things. But I think we also want it to be about items that are pertinent to the town. So I'm, we'll see where we get to, but I'm worried that this might get, we might lose the forest for the trees going line by line, especially if we want to add other things to it. But the concept of it being more open to more topics, I'm absolutely in support of.
Is there a friendly amendment on the horizon?
I guess I'll just kind of leave it and see what it looks like at the end.
Okay, so the consensus that's on the table at the moment is that we would remove that meeting's agenda. So the new verbiage for Section 9.1 would say, "The purpose of minute with counsel is to provide a platform for residents to speak to counsel." Period. That would be the new wording if we remove this. So if there's no other, oh. Counselor Nelson?
So I'm, it might just make things more confusing, but the verbiage is different in this top section than it is within the bylaw itself. So I'm in the bylaw itself, and it's different. So in the actual bylaw, it says residents are welcome to speak to counsel about items on that meeting's agenda. The verbiage isn't matching between the two different, the header part and the explanation and the actual bylaw itself.
Just pulling it up right now. Mary Labarge? Just a minute, sorry.
Can I just, well, I guess it's out there now. I would like to change this so that the essence of the clause is that citizens can discuss with counsel whatever, whatever the exact words are in the front explanation or in the body of the bylaw itself. I don't think it's fair to limit it to items that are on the agenda that day. If a citizen has an item they want to talk to, it's never on the agenda. They never get the opportunity to have their say. That's my feeling.
Does administration feel like they have enough information from this consensus to bring something forward to a future meeting? Or would you like it to be wordsmithed a little further?
Through the chair, no, I don't think so. And just for council, you know, we know that when we're going through all of these things in a committee, we're not, you know, there may be other things that need to be tweaked and stuff like that. But I don't think we have to worry too much of the details. As long as we have good, clear direction on what council intends, there's probably going to be a little bit of tweaking that we'll need to do anyways. And when we bring it forward, the next time, council can just make sure that we captured your thoughts and that we got it right. So we'll make sure, I think that this is clear and we understand the intent for 9.1.
Okay, so hearing that, I'd like to call this consensus for a vote, then. I think the intent's pretty clear across the board, what this needs to look like. And administration seems clear on what we need. So if we can get that up. So that committees seek consensus to strike the words after speak to counsel in 9.1, and that the purpose of minute with counsel is to provide a platform for residents to speak to counsel. So if everyone could please vote now. And we have, Jen's got all the hands. Counselors Dunn, McLean, Labarge, and McDonald in favor by hand. Okay, that motion is carried. Counselor Nelson?
I would like to seek consensus that Section 9.2 must is replaced with encouraged to. If I could speak to, I actually think there's great value in people registering ahead. I can give administration idea, like a night like tonight, if a whole bunch of people wanted to speak at a committee meeting, well, let's, ahead of time, decide it's going to be out here. People might be wanting to join on Zoom. So encouraging people to register for a minute with counsel would be great. But I think people being able to show up is absolutely appropriate as well.
Perfect, thank you, Counselor Nelson. So for those in the audience, Section 9.2 says, currently reads in the bylaw that participants must register by 4:00 PM on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting. And Counselor Nelson is proposing that we remove the word must. So it would then read, participants are encouraged to register by 4:00 PM on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting. Is that correct? Yeah. Counselor McLean?
Yes, I don't know if friendly amendment's in place, but should we add encourage to register up to a certain period of time, like an hour before the meeting? Encourage, right? So they could register any time before that.
Thank you. Mary Labarge?
I mean, my view of that is I don't think you have to register. I think you could walk in here, and if there weren't, you know, four or five people or whatever, you're calling if anybody else would like to speak. There's four spots open. You have your whatever, 90 seconds or 120 to talk. And so I think, I like the intent of Counselor Nelson's motion where you say to people, you know what, give us a chance to plan for you, or you're going to have to sit on that hard bench in there. But I think I would like to see it be open right up until minute for counsel comes open.
We have Counselor Dunn first.
This is a question for Counselor Chambers. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on this because you had gone through the previous parliamentarian exercise. And do you think there's any disadvantage to this where people don't have to register early?
Thank you. I would say that I do believe it's important to register because there is oftentimes that administration has to go back with information to them, maybe make a response or send more information, et cetera. So a registration process, I believe, is valuable. I think with the intent of the motions being put forward by individuals here tonight and lumping in the community announcements piece, I don't necessarily feel like there would be a large harm in somebody coming at 3:30 and, you know, putting their name forward for the discussion. So I think it would be manageable.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, did you have something to add, CEO Panasik?
Thank you, Chair. You spoke about what I wanted to speak about in the first part, just with registering. From an administrative perspective, lots of times people will come and they do have questions about something. If they pre-sign up, really all we need is their name and, you know, how to get a hold of them. And then we can actually follow up with, uh, with answers to anyone who comes. So it is nice that way. Uh, what we were doing prior was that it, it wasn't ahead of the meeting, but it was really, or, you know, essentially there was a sign up sheet outside. We're saying, you know, if you want to speak with minute of council, put your names out there. And I believe that the practice was, you know, we would go through the list of people who pre-register. Then we would just say, you know, is there anybody else who would like to speak today? And then, uh, conclude that portion of the meeting.
Thank you. I do have, uh, councillor McLean in the queue, but I will just have a quick follow up if you don't mind before. Is that verbiage of having a sign up sheet outside, something that needs to be within this nine point two? Um, from this procedural bylaw standpoint as an addition, in your opinion?
Um, through the chair to members of council, I, I would say that if council likes, prefers that way, we, we could, you know, we could certainly look at instead of registering by, you know, registering ahead of time that, you know, reg, uh, residents or members of the public are encouraged to, um, sign up prior to the meeting so they can do it physically when they get here. Or they could send, uh, you know, Jen or anyone from administration a note ahead of time saying that, you know, I'd like to speak with, with minute with council. So we could just leave it open and we, we could do that as a matter of practice.
Okay. Uh, councillor McLean?
Yes, uh, the only thing about not having registration and stuff is if we get to nine point three where it says maximum, right? When, when do we, like, if we don't have a maximum, do we just go all night or whatever, right? So the sign up sheet, uh, or what I was looking at when I was going through this is that you had to register up to an hour or 30 minutes before the meeting. So that administration would know that we hit our max of four or the sign up sheet and then cut off or five or whatever it is, right?
All right. Counsel? Councillor McDonald.
So for some clarification to that, when people are signing up outside. So if we have three people sign up outside and there's another two people in the audience, they can still come up and speak.
CEO?
Through the chair, members of council. So, um, a cap on the number wasn't something that we had in place prior. Uh, but yeah, I would imagine that, you know, if, as an example, if council wants to move ahead with, you know, five speakers per meeting, if there are three that sign up and to want to, uh, come and speak to the floor. But we would, we would keep it under that, uh, that five.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I think from my perspective, it having a, a number, I mean, it can be unlimited, but that's all of our time, right? So I know with the previous council, when we did speak about five and, you know, was that kind of two to three minutes? You're looking at 10 to 15 minutes of your, your meeting being your, you know, your minute with council thing. So looking at from that perspective, uh, councillor Nelson?
Uh, I'm, I'm just curious, we, we're on to kind of the next point and it might impact what we do at this point. And I think I have a very different opinion on, on the next point. Um, so I'm curious if it's better to, I, I don't know that it'll impact the other one, but, um, I can happily withdraw this or table this until we've had the, the limit thing. Because that seems to be where the conversation is, is going. So I, I, if council's prepared to, to vote on this, cool. If not yet, I'll happily withdraw it. And then we can make it again later after we've had the, the discussion of, of limits. Um, cause I don't, I don't think I share the same opinion as many of my colleagues on that one.
Mary LaBarre.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to table this until we have the next discussion, actually.
Uh, councillor Nelson?
Can we do a friendly table or do I have to make a, seek consensus to, to table it? Or is it easier just to withdraw it friendly?
Uh, yeah. Uh, through the chair, I don't believe in our procedural bylaw that we allow for, uh, friendly tables. So I would.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move to, uh, table this, uh, until later in the discussion. I don't know if that's a proper, uh, motion to table, but.
Is this due with the tabling?
Yeah.
The motion? Oh, uh, councillor McDonald or is it a new point? Okay. And then we'll wait, we vote on the tabling first. All right. So we are voting to table the consensus, um, until a later date. If everyone has that up, I will ask you to please vote now. All right. And that is tabled. I have councillor McDonald in the queue next.
Okay. So in, so in regards to nine point two and nine point three, are we allowed to come to combine those two together?
CEO?
Yeah, through the chair, certainly.
You think you.
Uh, councillor Nelson?
Yeah, a lot of people have shared their thoughts on the, the maximum number of speakers. Um, I, I am opposed to a general max number of speakers. And the reason for that is you might have a, a group, um, that is all really pushing for one thing. And they can coordinate and bring five people in, all register first, come in and say, we really want to cut down all those trees out there. It's a great idea. Anybody that's opposed to that or has opinions on anything else on the agenda? None of them have the ability to speak at all. So if it's limiting it to two speakers per each agenda item for and against, then maybe. But, um, I, by, by creating a cap, we create the opportunity for people to get really political and really impact what can happen if we're talking about, uh, wanting to make minute with council a little bit less, uh, intense. Uh, having people show up and, uh, that, that want to share a, a, a nice opinion with council that don't have the opportunity because other people were more organized. Um, I, I, I really don't like the cap thing at all for that, uh, for that purpose. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mary LaBarre.
So maybe we just put an overall time limit on, on a commitment in a meeting to doing this as the cap. Maybe. What are councillors think?
I'm going to go to councillor Dunn.
Just for clarification, then you're saying it would be for 15 minutes and like six, 90 seconds per person. And if the time runs out, then people leave. And how would we, how would we, um, say who goes first? If they're not registering.
Mary LaBarre.
Well, I guess I, I, I suggested that. I, I think that the sign up is a good idea, but it leaves a little more latitude, I think. Given, I'd never really thought about that till councillor Nelson brought it up, but that's a, actually a good thought. And, uh, I've seen that happen.
I think I'm going to go to councillor Nelson and then councillor McLean following that.
Uh, thank you. I, I think we also might be, um, over legislating this. Uh, in my four years on council, there was never a time that it went, there were individuals that would like to go really long. Um, and that's really up to the chair. Um, but there was never a time that, um, that, that it was an issue with the overall time of the meeting, uh, in four years. I think there was one, um, one, uh, sequence of events that happened with the previous council that, um, that, that I think created, uh, it, it happens and, and sometimes within council, things happen and, but sometimes they can just be a one-off, either for, for good or for bad. Um, and, and I worry that the more we try to legislate this, the more it's, you know, we create a timeline and we create a limit and we, they have to register, like the more, the more steps we add in, I think are steps to solve what's, hasn't really happened outside of one time, as far as I know in the last decade, or at least since I've lived in Hinton. So thank you.
Uh, councillor McLean. Oh, geez.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think we're overthinking it, right? Really? Uh, if a group is out there and they can organize five speakers to come in and occupy their time, they could come in and organize 30 minutes or 15 minutes or whatever we're putting on it, right? I like the registration. I like five speakers, right? And if down the road, we see that user groups are using it for, uh, a lobby purpose, then maybe we could look at it then. But I think just moving forward and opening up to the, uh, citizens, right? That we'll be able to manage that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can just follow up to, to your point, I think, I don't know that we're, we're overthinking it. It's, how do we get this to a place where it's manageable for administration? It's manageable for the chair of the meeting. And I, I think if, we would all love to be in the position where we had so many community announcements that we were running out of time. But unfortunately, that's not usually when these guidelines come into play. So I think that's, it's good to strike that balance that allows you some parameters. Um, when discussions do get maybe a bit out of hand, um, to have some parameters around some of that, while still allowing for the constructive discussions, which are generally the majority to councillor Nelson's point of, uh, what you'd see in something like this. Just, Mary LaBarre?
I would like to move that can, committee seek consensus to strike nine point three, limiting the number of speakers at any meeting.
All right, councillor Dunn.
I'm just wondering, would we still add, uh, a timeframe though?
I'm saying take it out there.
So the motion is to strike nine point three, my computer in its entirety. Um, and then we'll discuss each speaker's timeframe later on, but I believe this is just removing it.
Fully convinced.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion on that, uh, we will call nine point three to question, uh, consensus that committee see consensus to strike nine point three in its entirety. Well, please vote now. All right. And that is carried unanimously. Hold on. Councillor Nelson?
I would like to seek consensus. I'm actually just going to keep going and leave that one for the end. Uh, like to seek consensus that we move, uh, nine point four. Um, to me, if people want to be providing materials, that's a delegation sort of a situation. Um, if people are bringing materials to us to speak with us for whatever we determine the timeframe to be, uh, it doesn't give us an opportunity to, to read them. It's not a point where we're having a two-way conversation. So if people have materials, then they should be coming to us as a delegation. Thank you.
All right. And just for those in the audience, so nine point four, was that any materials provided for the purpose admitted with council will be exempt from section eight point three. Um, and councillor Nelson's motion is that we strike nine point four in its entirety. Does anyone have any discussion on this specifically? Uh, CEO Panasik?
Uh, thank you. Just one thing for council to keep in mind is, you know, that one might be a difficult one to manage for the chair. Just because, you know, if somebody does come prepared, you know, looks to provide documentation of any kind to council. Typically it's been after where somebody comes in, talks about something and then provides a written, uh, summary of what they had spoken about. Um, that's usually what I've seen in the past. And, uh, the chair will have to just simply refuse, uh, I think at that point, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Councillor Nelson?
I think, I think we have to refuse it anyways, because any, if it's within 24 hours, we can't accept it without a resolution at the time of the agenda being approved. Because minute with council comes after the agenda is approved. Our bylaw also doesn't, wouldn't allow us to take that, any documentation anyways.
Seeing no one else in the queue, just, oh, go ahead, CEO. So just my question is, so if a nonprofit organization came, just as a hypothetical, if a nonprofit organization came in, did a minute with council, they had a flyer that they wanted to give out about their barbecue. With this being removed, would we not be allowed to accept the flyer? Is like, or is it that strict? Or, or are you meaning a whole package of information about the history of all of these things and why we should make a decision?
Well, in a, you know, the short answer is that's up to council on what they would want to accept and what they wouldn't. Um, it's a, it's a fair point. You know, if something is related to the, um, you know, to information that should be public and they're providing it in that format, that might be a little bit problematic. The other thing that we can, can do is that if somebody wants to provide documentation, we can just collect it as administration and provide it to council later on too. Just as a matter of practice, if this goes forward, I don't think it's an issue. Um, yeah.
All right. Uh, is there any further discussion on the removal of item nine point four in its entirety? Uh, now that we've got some clarification from administration. If there's no further discussion, then we will call that item to question as well. All right. Uh, please vote now. Okay. And I think she has everyone's. All right. And that motion is carried unanimously. All right. Uh, councillor McLean?
I'd like to, uh, for nine point five, seek consensus that, uh, we change the one minute to three minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. So item nine point five currently reads each speaker will have up to one minute to present their announcement with speaking time controlled by a digital timer. And the consensus on the floor is to change the one minute to three minutes. Council? Any discussion on this? Uh, councillor Dunn?
Just wondering if this is an area where we should put in a max on time if we were going to. Because if they have three minutes, you're looking at five people anyway, right? Say if we did 15 minutes. I'm just wondering if this is the area that we should be adding it in.
So you're, so to add in a time block on the agenda itself. So this section is more speaking about the individual speaker having one minute. And I believe with the removal of the maximum number of speakers, we might require a separate consensus after we've gone through these numbers to add that in. Am I, CEO?
Uh, yes, through the chair and members of council. So if council decides that they want to, you know, pass this motion, um, we have removed, I believe that was nine point three that looked like an overall cap, but that doesn't stop any member of council from introducing some different, uh, a different motion, maybe a, a time cap or anything like that down the road, depending on we, what we decide here. So we can certainly discuss that after.
Okay. Clear? Yeah. All right. Uh, any further discussion on the consensus on the floor to change from one minute to three minutes? And seeing none, I will call that to vote for consensus, please. All right. Please vote now. Lots of hands. All right. And that motion is carried unanimously. Uh, councillor Nelson?
Uh, I think the, uh, next points really hinge on, uh, a potential consensus that councillor Dunn was looking to put forward. So, um, I would say councillor Dunn, if you want to put that limit forward, I think, uh, it would impact the next, uh, the next things because it, it's about discretion. So, um, I would just encourage you to put that, uh, consensus forward.
Nope. Microphone.
I would like to put a consensus forward then that we cap the timeframe for speakers to 20 minutes.
All right. Uh, while we're getting that up on the screen, I will go to comment from councillor Nelson.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that. And then, uh, looking for a future motion to, uh, allow the chair at their discretion to extend that if, uh, if, if they deem fit. So thank you.
Just a clarifying question, councillor Dunn. Um, is Is this intent to replace nine point six with this motion, like to remove nine point six or?
No, that's, I was just going to ask that because the nine point six says counsel as a whole has discretion to increase the amount of time allocated to a speaker as opposed to just the chair. That's how I read it. So I would think that would stay the same.
Okay, so this is a new consensus.
Yeah.
Counselor McLean?
I think it would replace the nine point three. If I could add a friendly amendment that we replace nine point three to encompass this.
I, oh, I think with the striking of nine point three, I believe I'll get confirmation from CEO Panasic. But I believe the numbering and all those things will just be brought forward and when it comes back to regular council meeting, or we don't need to go through the numbering as a counsel at this point, do we?
Yes, to the chair, Counselor McLean is right. This essentially does replace it. But I don't think that we need to specify that. I think that we have all of the motions in order. We'll just shape it towards the motions that have been provided.
Okay, so we don't need that additional motion. Perfect. Okay, any other discussion on Counselor Dunn's consensus? I think it's clear. So seeing none, we will call that to vote. That committee seek consensus to cap the timeframe for speakers at minute with counsel to 20 minutes. Please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously. Counselor Nelson?
I would like to seek consensus to reword nine point seven to communicate that minute with counsel is a one-way conversation. And I would leave it open to admin to figure out what the verbiage looks like. If, if I could speak to it, I think the reason minute with counsel worked, when it did work, was it's people letting counsel know something. The, the moment it becomes a two-way dialogue, that's what a delegation is for. And a delegation, we get the materials upfront. We're going to ask good questions when we start. Somebody brings something up and then we start asking questions on the fly. That, I think, more than the number of speakers will be what creates a time suck with minute with counsel. And, and that's, that's the encouragement with the community. If, if you want to speak with counsel and allow counsel to ask questions, that's, that's a delegation. So minute with counsel with this motion, people come up, they speak to us. The chair says thanks, and, and that's where our interaction with, with the speakers stops. So, thank you.
All right, counsel, any discussion on that point? So it would be removing, as it reads nine point seven, at the moment that counsel as a whole may ask relevant questions to the speaker. So it would be removing that ability of questions from us and that it would just be receiving that information at that time. Just everyone's clear. Okay, seeing no microphones lit up, we will call that question as well. That committee seek consensus to reword nine point seven, that minute with counsel is a one-way conversation. And I'm sure administration can wordsmith that a bit as we get through it. Yeah, perfect. Okay, please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously. Mayor LaBarge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So nine, five, one, it says that the whole of counsel can extend time. I mean, somebody's talking away, and so we're going to take five minutes to pass a vote to see if we're going to give them another 30 seconds. I would like to see that wording be changed at the discretion of the chair to seek consensus. On nine, okay, let me start over. Nine, five, one, that the chair has the discretion to increase the amount of time allotted to the speaker.
All right, Counselor Nelson?
Mayor LaBarge, I would just look for a friendly amendment to now allow that to include the discretion of the previous motion that Counselor Dunn put forward, if we want to extend it past the 20 minutes as well. So the speakers potentially, but just as long as the intent is that, that the chair can, can extend an individual or minute with counsel as a whole.
I agree. That was very friendly.
If I may, oh, Counselor Dunn, I'll go to you first.
If I'm not mistaken, there was a comment in that report that's changed it from the chair making the decision to, to counsel. So I would like to ask Counselor Chambers about that, if she could speak to it, please.
Yes, that was actually what I was going to bring up as well. So I will not be speaking in favor of this consensus. I believe that when there are potentially difficult circumstances, that if we're moving ahead past a 20-minute meeting, past individual speakers' times, that it, I believe it should be at the consensus of the council. Again, lots of great happy community announcements, probably not a problem. But allowing that discretion to just one person and, and some potentially difficult circumstances can leave some hard feelings across council. And I believe that having all of counsel agree to it is probably the most transparent way to make sure that we're not one-sided in cutting off an argument that may be polarizing different divisions of our community. And I believe that was a bit of the intent of the parliamentarian at that time, that it wasn't leaving that ultimate control just to the chair, that we would have that ability to all weigh in on whether or not we felt this was, you know, worthy of the continuation of all of counsel's time. So I, I personally like it as it's presented, but I do agree with having it, the amount of time allocated to a speaker or, or the entire thing. But I'm, I would not be voting in favor of this as presented at this time. That helps.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Sorry, Chair, if I could, Mayor LaBarge, if you could just take a look if we captured what we had spoken about?
Mayor LaBarge?
I don't know, I usually don't speak against your own motions, but I do appreciate that. And if you end up being the person in the chair when those difficult things do come, I've, I've seen it before where, where fingers start to get to be pointed. And I hadn't really thought about it that way, but I, I think that's a, and I'm just trying to figure out how to do this most effectively. It's not going to come up a lot. And maybe the one instance when it does come up, it's going to be a difficult situation. And I'd hate for it to be me, so. I don't think I will support my motion either.
All right. So any other discussion on this? Counselor Charlton?
Just, just to clarify this, the motion has already been made. If we want to change the wording of this motion, it has to be voted on first, am I correct?
So we would, either you could have an amendment, and then we would vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion, or we vote this motion one way or the other, and then a new motion can be made after that point, whatever the desire is.
So kind of what I'm hearing is that the consensus that the chair has the discretion, that the wording could be changed from chair to counsel, has the discretion?
Nine, five, one?
Sure, but the way this is reading is that the responsibility all comes back onto the chair. And I think that that's what we're trying to dispute, right?
Yeah, so we would call, we would call this motion to question. If it does not pass, then it's done. And then it would be up to counsel to make a, either leave it as it is or make a new motion if they wanted to add more clarity to the other pieces of the speaker and the overall time allotment could be made as a future motion. Thank you. CEO Panasic, am I on the right track?
You're correct.
Okay, good. All right, so with that, if everyone's clear, I think we will call this motion to question. Now, there's so many people voting by hand, so we will, I will do this slightly different. We will ask for all those for the motion, and if everyone can vote for or against. Any against would raise their hand. Now, I don't know, is that the best way to do it?
Were you for or were you against?
This, this would be against. Well, we don't have, we don't have our electronics in front of us, so we should have a show of hands publicly, so. All right, that motion is defeated six to one with Counselor Nelson voting for. Counsel? Counselor Nelson?
I, I don't know the point number, because my point's down in my section or different than the points above. But basically the same motion, except the council as a whole have the discretion to increase the amount of time allocated to a speaker or minute with counsel in its entirety, or however you want to word that. Thank you.
All right, we'll just give administration a minute to catch up to our very clear directions.
Counselor Nelson, if you could just make sure that captures your intent?
All right, so I'll just review this. So nine point six currently reads that counsel as a whole has the discretion to increase the amount of time allocated to a speaker. With Counselor Nelson's motion, we will be adding that counsel as a whole has discretion to increase the overall time allotment as well. So this would also be reflected in item nine point whatever, when it comes back. All right, any further discussion on this point? Then we will call this to question. Please vote now. All right, and that motion is carried unanimously. All right, so that gets us through the base of those points. Mayor LaBarge?
So in this question for administration, we did get an indication that there was an administrative change to be made as well. Do you need a motion that that be included in this change as well? I guess we're talking about seven point two in the document?
Through the mayor to members of council, I think the easiest thing to do is, once we're done with all the, the individual changes, that we can just have it for counsel to refer this, refer this bylaw to a regular council meeting as amended. And the amendments are clear because counsel's provided that direction. And as long as counsel's okay with what's been included in the document, we don't need to touch on it unless there's any changes.
So I don't, I don't want to cut anybody off.
Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, I would like to move to bring the tabled motion back to us. I don't even know what that motion's supposed to look like.
Nope, that's the old.
No, I have one for before. So while administration is bringing that back up, when it comes to registering, considering all the other changes that we made, I'm, my curiosity is whether the best motion is just to say citizens are encouraged to register ahead of the meeting. It, you know, admin might find a way to communicate that and, and kind of say, hey, this is the email to send it to. But whether the day before is right or noon that day, I, I, I think either just encouraged to register or just leave it out completely. I'm, I'm happy. It was a little bit earlier still, I think.
Yeah, that one. If I may, CEO Panasic, do we have to vote on bringing it back, or he just brings it to the table that way?
No, through the mayor, we would need to vote to take this from the table.
Okay, so if we can get that up, we will vote on not the consensus, but on bringing the tabled item back to the floor. I think. All right. So we will wait for that to come up, but it will be that committee seek consensus to take from the table the original motion that Counselor Nelson had tabled previously. Just wait for that to come up. Oh, there we go. Please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously, so we can go back to discussion on the original motion brought up by Counselor Nelson. Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, I, I guess I would just ask for a friendly amendment. It kind of captures the same point, but reflects what we've talked about and made other consenses on, that participants are encouraged to register ahead of the meeting, whatever that verbiage looks like.
Thank you. One question I just have. Is there any need in this bylaw, and I guess this is to administration, to state that speakers would be heard in order of registration? Again, maybe part of the encourage to, just so that it's clear to the public that if you show up at three forty-five, you may be the last one or may not, just so that they understand that the precedence is, is in order of that. I don't know, maybe, CEO?
Through the chair, members of council, we certainly can, right? This, this is really procedures that are going to work for this council. So if we, you know, if we want to add into this clause that speakers will be, you know, or it'll be a first come, first served when it comes to the order of speakers based on the registration list. We, we certainly can with those who didn't register after, for example.
Counselor Dunn?
That's exactly what I was going to suggest.
Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, I would accept a friendly amendment that, that speaks to, that minute with council speakers are in order of registration. Again, admin can figure out the verbiage on that, but I happily accept that friendly.
CEO, is that acceptable as a friendly amendment, or would you like to see that as an actual amendment to the current motion?
Note for the chair, just for any friendly amendment, as long as council unanimously agrees that it's friendly, then we can just go ahead and process it.
Counsel, are we in agreement to take that friendly amendment? Yeah. All right, so I think we, do we look to administration to wordsmith that?
Counselor Nelson, if you could just confirm that we got that one correct?
Uh, councilor done.
I'm just wondering if we should still add something within the twenty minutes unless extended by council?
I believe that's in a different place in the bylaw, so I think that's already covered by, by a separate point. Is that, yeah?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to read this from the beginning. So that committee seek consensus to remove in nine point two, the word must and replace with encourage to register prior to the meeting, and the speakers will present in order of registration. Those who did not register will have an opportunity to speak after the registered speakers. Anyone like to speak to this? Good. All right, so seeing none, we will call this consensus to question. Please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously. Mayor Labarche?
And to anybody watching, to the audience out there, we're learning to work together. And um, we wanted to really have this as open as it can be, but to build some rules around this makes some sense. Um, or I've seen it get carried away. Uh, I know everybody's favorite project from the last council really did um, throw a lot of hot issues on an ongoing basis into the laps of council. I think it's smart to take a little bit of time and talk this through, so. My apologies as we work our way through uh, learning to work together, but I think it's important.
All right, uh, we do require one more motion from council. Uh, Mayor Labarche?
I will move that we bring the amended uh, bylaw. You had it up once before, Jen. Two zero zero three dash one to a future uh, regular meeting of council. As amended. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
We have one too many as amended's up there.
I think we.
Should be six.
Take, take as amended off the end, Jen, and then I think it's good. Because it says the amended council procedure by law.
All right, so the consensus on the floor is that committee referred the amended council procedure by law number two zero zero three dash one to a future regular council meeting. Please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously. We, we made it. All right, and that'll come back to regular council meeting if anyone in attendance would like to come and see how this goes for us. Okay, uh, item number four point three, uh, Ascend Movement Studio Expression of Interest. I'd like to just take a moment before we uh, get into this item. We understand that there has been a lot of concern about a conflict of interest um, with CEO Panasiak on this item. Um, but Mayor Labarche and I spoke, and we'd like to confirm that right from the very beginning, CEO Panasiak was very direct and that he would not be involved and he would not be weighing in on any of this item. Um, so Mayor Labarche had asked that I just bring that up before we get into this discussion, that it was, it has been very clear that there is a conflict of interest and that he will not be weighing in um, or involved in this agenda item going forward. So just a quick item. So with that, we will, I believe this item will be presented by Chris Murphy, who is our Director of Community Protective Services. I'll turn it over to Director Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and through to council. On November third, twenty twenty five, Parks Recreation and Culture received a letter from Ascend Movement Studio expressing their interest in establishing a partnership with the town of Hinton to operate their studio within the Dr. Duncan Murray Recreation Center. Copy of that letter was attached to the administrative report. As you'll see in the analysis, there is not a whole lot of details for you uh, at, at this point. So right now, what we have is this request, this expression of interest. I do think it's important to point out uh, that in addition to this administrative uh, report, Ascend has not requested any specific space whatsoever. You'll see in the report, we did have identify the family center as a possible location, but that is not uh, an, any decision that, that is solidified. It was just something that was identified as a possibility based on the request and the activities that would be required, uh, should we move forward with this request. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, the second is uh, that uh, bringing this uh, before you hear today is really our first step to ascertain if there's interest by uh, council committee uh, for administration to further explore this request. As noted in the report, should committee direct administration would explore all options available, the impact of each option and the process that would follow from that point forward. So with that, I will, I will turn it over to, to any questions of, of committee at this time.
All right, uh, councilor done.
To administration, I'm not sure if it's directed to Mr. Murphy or not, but I'm just wondering how an expression of interest letter went from that to people feel, group feeling that they were going to be displaced. And I know what you said, but I just it seemed like something was missing there.
Through the chair to committee, thank you for the question. I, I can advise that it was very important to myself and all others in administration that uh, any possible impacted user group did not first hear about this through, whether it's social media or other means. So we did have some preliminary, very preliminary uh, meetings that were held, but it was made very clear uh, at each of those preliminary meetings that no decision had been made uh, that this request uh, may be coming. And, and once this request was received, it would be brought forth in this manner to receive direction on the next step.
Counselor done.
As a follow-up question, so um, FCSS was part of that conversation as well. Director Murphy?
Through the chair to committee, absolutely, uh, that is correct. Uh, there was meetings with FCSS as uh, if we were to proceed with the family center space, they would definitely be an impacted user group.
Thank you.
Counsel? Counselor Nelson?
Uh, I'll seek consensus that committee of the whole accept this report for information. Um, if I could speak to it, and if council has a lot more questions, uh, I would happily table this and, and allow that conversation to happen. It's not my intention to stifle any conversations, but um, I look at this some similar to what we're looking at with um, you know, Erith Park. So the first thing council does is say, we're looking for infill. Then administration brings back uh, a whole bunch of options, and then we look at individual things and, and it kind of cascades that way. I think uh, the idea of maximizing uh, usership and revenues out of the rec center is an awesome concept. Um, and any other public building. And if council in the future, potentially after strap planning said, hey, we really want to look at town-owned assets that we can start making more revenue, impacting more user groups in a positive way, then have admin bring back, you know, what used to be the skate sharpening room. Maybe there's a, a room in here that we could lease out and, and, and look at that as a, a, a bigger thing rather than a one-off request. The precedence of, of uh, private business coming to the town and um, and making a request, and then, and then we work kind of back up towards council, to me, concerns me. Uh, a lot of what this project is, I actually really, I, I really like the concept, but uh, to me, um, the, the decision-making is kind of coming in the wrong direction for this. Uh, and, and what I'm kind of afraid of in the middle of, you know, budget season, we haven't gone through strap planning yet, is we, we go down this path and it likely would displace somebody, whether it's FRN, whether it's taking this room and turning it into uh, a fitness center, and then a whole bunch of other conversations and decisions that will have to be made. It might be renovations, it might be going out to market rate, like, to me, this is a lot bigger, bigger kind of squirrel than, than I'm currently prepared to uh, move forward with current, with, with how much we need to kind of learn and, and absorb over the next few months. So, thank you.
Mayor Labarche?
Thanks. Um, I, I agree, um, but I, I and I've said this to some people that have had communications through this process is we're now charged to have a look at how to take that. I mean, uh, the center down there, uh, we're going to spend somewhere between, I don't know, thirty-five and a hundred and twenty million dollars. It's going to take some time, and while that's going on, we're going to have to figure out how best to utilize that place. And uh, I just, I, I, I would like to see us have a more holistic view at that. And I agree with uh, Counselor Nelson that maybe strategic planning is a good place to sit down and have that conversation. Um, I do, I mean, the use that's been put forward, it's complementing to everything else that goes on in the, in the center. Um, and I would like to see us move toward that. I just think we should do it a little more cautiously.
Thank you. And with no one else in the queue, I, I think I'll, I'll just weigh in. I really, I do agree that we really need to take a look at the usable hours, the usable times within our facilities. How do we maximize the recreation center that we have to the best of its ability as we move forward in the next stages? I think that's critical and, and doing it by starting with a one-off is probably not the best place. Um, so I, I do agree with the consensus as it's put forward at this time, but I think it would be really remiss if we weren't looking at what our options are going forward. If we miss this at strategic planning, I think it's a big miss of this council. Um, recreation was a key priority, obviously, through this, as we all know. Um, and we need to not just look at what are we going to do in three years or five years or ten years, we need to look at what can we do now? And how do we use those spaces? So I don't know if uh, uh, consensus needs to come forward to do some direction uh, to make sure that this is a topic at strategic planning, but I certainly uh, at first support uh, receiving this for information. Uh, councilor done?
I, I believe that these, these types of businesses will be something that we would be looking at in the future with the potential new rec center and I, or new rec sender, sorry, um, no potential. Um, and I think this is a, is an opportunity for the current rec center to uh, generate some revenue. So I don't think it's something, I don't believe it's something that we should just dismiss uh, as a report. I would like to make a consensus that we do discuss it um, at strategic planning.
Thank you. Uh, I just got to switch the mic here. Uh, Counselor McLean?
Yes, well, I somewhat agree and somewhat disagree with what's been said. Uh, with my experience and been observing over the last year and a half, two years of previous councils and everything, I feel council and administration have blinders on when it comes to user groups. Our user groups are the backbone of the community. They're made up of volunteers. They were what built the community. Right? And when someone comes along with an idea, we seem to chase that rabbit down the rabbit hole for the almighty dollar. When the community is not always about the almighty dollar, it's about the fabric of the community and building the community, right? So we made a mistake at the golf course. We may make uh, the same mistake at Erith Park. Uh, hopefully we don't, but user groups are the ones that have to be addressed upfront and foremost. Right? Uh, so I agree, strategic planning is where we should have this discussion, but I will always be uh, first and foremost, as the user groups of this town take priority over the almighty dollar. Thanks.
Mayor Labarche?
We don't have to give any kind of a consensus that this would come forward to strategic, we can throw whatever we want in strategic planning, isn't that the case?
Through the chair to the rest of the committee, I have made notations of that uh, a few times. I will speak to the rest of administration to confirm, but it's my understanding by you raising it here today that we would be able to add that to further discussions at strap planning.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And can I just follow up? I, I, I don't, I mean, when I looked at this, it, it had very little to do with the money and it had everything to do with the use. And uh, I think we're, we're charged to, to maximize uh, the use of that place down there. It's big, it's expensive, and um, we're going to be charged to do that, and I'm happy to do that strategic planning.
Counselor done.
Just a comment to Counselor McLean, um, I guess I, that's why I was going back with um, Mr. Murphy about how it went from a letter to people being displaced and talking about the user groups. I, we, we never even got to that point to talk about user groups potentially being displaced. So I just wanted to make that comment. I didn't, I didn't sense that for me.
Yeah, through the chair to committee, um, I'm not sure if that was a question, but I, I, again, I'll just reemphasize that uh, it was just very important for administration to make sure with the potential that had been put forth as the possible location that we identified any user groups that may have been identified. So when this report came forth in a public fashion, uh, that was not the first time they were seeing it and that we had some communication ahead of time. Uh, but again, it was, it was emphasized that no decision had been made whatsoever. This is very preliminary.
Thank you. All right, uh, any further discussion on this? If not, we do have a consensus on the table from Counselor Nelson. Seeing none, so we will call to question that committee accepts this report for information. Please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously. So that ends section four um, of our meeting, the reports from administration. Uh, now we move on to section five, which is correspondence. Counsel? Anyone like to make a motion? Mayor Labarche?
I move that the correspondence be received as information.
All right, thank you. So the consensus on the floor is that committee accept the correspondence for information. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call to question, please vote now. All right, and that is carried unanimously. Uh, that gets us on to agenda item number six, reporting. Uh, item six point one, council reports. I will start with uh, Counselor Nelson.
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, Counselor McDonald?
Nothing to report?
Sorry, say that again. Counselor Labar, or Mayor Labarche?
Ditto.
Counselor Charlton? Counselor McLean?
Nothing to report.
Uh, counselor done. All right, and I also have nothing to report at this time. Looks like we're all getting in the swing of learning what our new uh, committees are, and I'm sure meetings will start happening. Uh, now we will go to CEO Panasiak.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a few things from me. Uh, attached to your agenda package, you do have the October operating highlights, so if there's any questions on that, please let us know. Same goes for the council action pending list as well as the uh, the complete list. So if there's any questions on any of that, please let me know. And I will just add that we are creating a budget twenty twenty-six portal on our website, and that's going to be really a live-in time feedback mechanism for the uh, for the budget and going through that entirety of the process. So we will um, you know, w- once all of those documents are complete and ready to go, they'll be uploaded to that portal. Uh, council can actually log in and they can see all the feedback in real time from uh, from anything on the agenda, and that will be uh, prominent on our webpage. So if there is any questions, can
And that will be, uh, prominent on our webpage. So if there is any questions, concerns or anything, you know, anything like that in, in the community, if you could direct them to that, uh, that budget portal, and we can have everything uh, central to that area and council can, uh, take a look at it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So we do have the, uh, operating highlights and the council action pending list attached. Hopefully everyone got a chance to review that. Is there any questions, uh, for C A O Panasi at the time related to any of these attachments? Uh, Counselor done.
Yes, I'm, uh, C A O Pasniak. Um, how often do we see this report?
Which port are you referring to?
The council action pending.
I believe we bring it forward first committee of every month. Oh, sorry, the last committee usually.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mayor LaBarre.
Um, fifty one, on page fifty one of sixty three, you're talking about the home support program had six new intakes. What's, what is that?
Through the chair to committee, that is under F C S S. Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page and, and talking the same, uh, as you, but F C S S does have a program that offers home support to certain individuals as they apply. Uh, there is, uh, a, a member of F C S S that attends to provide various supports to that person.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, we will, we don't need to accept that, do we? Mayor LaBarre?
I guess I, I do have, um, I was sort of on the, the highlights, um, program or, uh, report. Um, are we at the same time talking about the action pending item? Cause there are some in there that, um, I, I don't know that I love. There's one that I would like to see be rescinded. Is this the time to talk about that?
C A O Panasi.
Through the chair members of council, uh, my suggestion is take note of that, but what we do plan on coming forward with essentially all of our outstanding actions to this new council to make sure that all of these things are going to be relevant. We do want all of council to take a look at the existing action, make sure that, you know, is council still comfortable with administration carrying out all those particular actions, but we plan to bring that forward in a more, uh, kind of cohesive setting, uh, probably at a future community of the whole meeting in December.
You don't want to keep going with our non cohesive meeting? Okay, no, that's, that's, that's really what I was looking for was, was a time to sort of line up what was happening to what is happening. So appreciate that. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Nelson?
Uh, looking at page fifty two of sixty three, in the statistics, it talks about three more encampments were cleaned. Do we have any concept of, uh, how many encampments are currently around? And if you're not prepared to speak to it, feel free to, to not. I understand it might be a big ask, uh, on a big list of random questions, so.
Director Murphy, are you taking this one?
Yes, yeah, through the chair to committee. Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, yes, that is correct. The three additional encampments had been cleaned up, but throughout the town of Hinton. I cannot speak to what there is today, uh, because it does change from day to day. I, I can tell you, um, right now, the strategy, of course, is to, to clean up, clean up one encampment. Uh, but typically what we're seeing then is another encampment created at a different location.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any further questions? I don't need reporting, I don't need a consensus to accept the reports, I don't believe.
Uh, through the chair, no, you don't.
Then we will go to section seven of our agenda. Which is adjournment, if someone would like to make that motion. Counselor Nelson?
I'll move that we adjourn.
All right, the motion on the floor is that committee adjourn the meeting at five thirty-nine P M. We'll just wait, uh, please vote now. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
You're good.
I need a trick.
Hey, Jen.